At Council Plus Savings Bank, you can get the protection you need from the bank you trust.
The only thing more important than knowing your money is safe is the assurance that your identity has protection. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
Pull her plunge. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, and I'd like to call a meeting to order to show all council members are in attendance and would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Are we going to delete 6A?
Uh, there's... no. We decided no, correct?
No, Marcy shows that we did not waive.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? Is... we have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Uh, tonight, we have six public hearings. Um, if you wish to address the council, please come forward to the podium and give your name and address for the record. This is time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-40, accepting the redevelopment proposal submitted by Brynshaw Development LLC, subject to final design approval on the property located at 110 South 28th Street. It's proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there... seen none? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Um, just to point out, by the way, I am in favor of this. What this resolution does is it accepts the proposal for them to begin to move forward on the project and put this out for public bid, section of West Broadway, the area that we hope to commercially redevelop. And the response that we received back was, shall we say, perhaps not quite as robust as what might have been first hoped for. This proposal, on its face, relies heavily upon public funding and financing of one degree or another, which is fairly common these days. Part of the reason why that's common, and the mayor has pointed this out, is because of not only how expensive it is to develop projects such as this, but also tax laws, how businesses are taxed in this state. Having said that, later on, in the staff package, it notes that the developer may be coming back to ask for further tax assistance through Chapter 404 of Iowa Code, which is urban revitalization areas. And there's another couple of projects that will be considered later on in the agenda that have to do with these revitalization areas. The difference is, in those packages, those revitalization areas have already been proposed and approved. I would ask the mayor and community development to again look into possibly designating what we've defined as the West Broadway Corridor as a Chapter 404 revitalization area to help encourage and put all businesses and developers on a level playing field. I think that this would be a boon to the business community and to the idea of getting the West Broadway Corridor redeveloped. And so I think that would be a shot in the arm for that particular corridor. And so I hope that not only in that area. Thank you.
And I do believe it is already in a TIF. This is on Second Avenue, and so it's not included in that, so we're gonna have to expand it. But I think West Broadway already is in a TIF, but I'll double check with community development to make sure what the boundaries of that TIF are.
This would have to do with a revitalization zone, so it provides tax credits as opposed to a rebate such as a TIF.
All right. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing as advertised on a matter of Resolution 16-41, authorizing disposal of city property legally described as the south 80.55 feet of Lot 6 Block C, Curtis &amp; Ramsey Edition. It's proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Seen no one. What's council's pleasure?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-42, approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for the Ice Cap Project East Broadway realignment of Keynesville Boulevard, US Highway, otherwise known as US Highway 6, fiscal year 15-20B. It's proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This, again, is the project, one of the environmentally friendly projects, trying to reduce emissions of vehicles in the community. What it would do is in front of the gas station at the end of East Broadway, it will change the lanes. There no longer needs to be based on current traffic configuration. Two turn lanes there. It'll reduce it to one, but due to a reconfiguration, which you'll have to look at the map. It's too tough to explain in words. But if you look at the map, you'll see that it'll allow you to go right. Intersection will be reoriented a bit. So to what is now forward will actually be a right turn, so you can go right on red. So many people have to, I imagine you do, I know I do, have to wait at that light, even because of timing, when traffic's not coming from the other direction, which wastes a lot of time, gas, and money. And this will speed traffic up in this area, and so it's a fantastic project.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-43, approving the mayor's budget ending June 30th, 2017. It's proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there a discussion?
With respect to the budget, I support the budget. I applaud our new finance director for the job that he's done in putting together and explaining this budget. As he noted today, this is a one-year document that has to account for expenditures and, if you will, forecasts for one year only. And what it doesn't do is help us make longer-term decisions. And so I thank Mr. Jordette for his work on this. And as we come up on production of the capital improvement program plan, which you noted today drives a lot of issues, I would encourage you and the mayor to sit down with that and help us have a plan that looks at some of our big-picture items that we'll be considering not only this coming year, but in a few years out. And we have some very large dollar item matters to be considered. And those are kind of hard to separate out in a year-to-year budget, what's gonna be the long-term impact of those. We're looking at, just by my count, the police headquarters building has to be done. West Broadway redevelopment has to be done. A potential sewer wastewater treatment plant that's going to need substantial work, if not replacement. We have the Plainland Park, Rivers Edge Development Streets. Recent article in the Nonpareil said that that could be an additional $10 million a year in order to get caught up on street repair. These are big-dollar item issues. So as we look at budgets year to year, it would be most helpful if we had that CIP that looked at these big capital expenditures and how we expect these things to be financed in the long term. And then that will help us be able to then go back and look at budgets and make sure that we're on a sustainable path far into the future. Thank you.
I think this budget is a fantastic and transparent example of living within our means. This is the 11th, if I'm not mistaken, the 11th year in a row that the levy has not gone up. And in these days of costs going up, certainly the costs of labor, of our people, none of us will be surprised that the cost of living goes up for each of us at home. And that's reflected in the cost of keeping good people working for you. The costs of equipment go up. But in our city, our economic growth continues to go up. More people, particularly more businesses, are here and paying taxes here. And more people are staying here, and more people are coming here. And that's allowed your city to grow at an essence inflation, not increasing the size of government, but continuing to provide the services by good-quality local people in the community who live with you and are your neighbors. And so I think in this economic climate, that is a remarkable accomplishment based on many, many people involved, not least of which all the people who work hard every day fixing your streets and making this city a safe place to be. And I commend the administration, the mayor, and his finance chief for a very sound fiscal budget, and I enthusiastically support it.
I just want to thank the mayor for bringing us a budget that is very reasonable. It's very well thought out. And I think that it shouldn't be lost on us that one of the reasons that we're able to keep our levy low is in due, in a large part, to our staff and our department heads. If you read the Nonpareil over the weekend, what Public Works is doing with milling their asphalt and using that to fill potholes, and how much money that's saving the city. You know, I know a lot of people think that the employees of the city don't necessarily want to keep taxes low, but most of them are also citizens of the city, and they also want to do a really good job for the city of Council Plus. And I think that's just an excellent example of how everybody works together to try to make your tax dollars go as far as possible. So not only do I appreciate the mayor's hard work and Dan's hard work, but the department heads and the employees who every single day give it their best to use those dollars as wisely as possible.
Thank you for those kind words. One of the things in this budget is the addition of staff members in the Public Works for West Broadway when we take that over. I think it's interesting that the street maintenance division of the Public Works, where those additional staff members will be employed, has not increased their staff for 23 years, which is pretty amazing that they've done. As we add streets, they've been able to absorb the maintenance of those streets within their current staffing levels. We'll have to increase it this year with West Broadway. I'd also like to say, today, they celebrated two years without an on-the-job injury, which is pretty amazing also, so.
Did you have your hand raised? Did you want to say something? Did we miss you? Yeah.
Sure. Can you give us your address, Steve, for the record?
Steve Middlinger, 1310 North Larchmont Drive. And I really appreciate what you're doing, Mr. Mayor, and everything that's going on in this city. I guess my concern would be just working all these projects in there so we don't have to have a tax increase and, you know, protecting our senior citizens and things like that. That would be my concern, that we get these under control and so that we're not borrowing money or I'm sure we're gonna have to do a bond or something like that in order to make this work. But there are a lot of projects going on with the water and Rivers Edge and the new police station. Those are concerns. That's all costly. Good, but costly.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to... Marcy said no written protest. Do we need to file? Is Sam Irwin's...
Oh, good point.
Is that email a written protest? Is that what we're gonna consider?
Arguably, it's common. I think so, to be fair to him, yes.
So we have it on file?
Somebody want to make the motion or receive and file the email from Sam Irwin?
I'd make a motion to receive and file Sam Irwin's email that he sent to all the council members.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify... or do we need to do that? Do we need to make a motion on receiving and filing? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Any other additional discussion on the budget? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-44, granting final plat approval of a subdivision plat to be known as Rivers Edge Subdivision, replat 2, being a replat of Blocks 2, 3, and 5, Rivers Edge subdivision. It's proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is it seen no one? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Nay.
This is time and place for a public hearing as advertised on the matter of Resolution 16-45, approving the development agreement between the city of Council Plus and the Iowa West Foundation for a project providing tax increment, financing incentives in the Bluffs Vision Urban Renewal Area. It's proof of publication on file.
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council in regards to this matter? Is there a motion from the council?
This is the one that's rescheduled for April 11th, correct? So...
Yep.
Yes, so it will be another public hearing on April 11th.
So do we... a motion for no action is...
Just don't take any.
All right. Don't need to take any action. All right. Um, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance on first consideration. Ordinance 6273, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by rezoning Block 3 and 5, Rivers Edge subdivision, from R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District and A2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District to R4 High Density Multi-Family Residential District, and to rezon Block 4 from R2 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District to R4 High Density Multi-Family Residential District, and append the PR Plan residential overlay as defined in Chapters 15.11 and 15.28, and setting a public hearing for March 14th, 2016, at 7:00 PM.
Motion to move the ordinance and set public hearing for March 14th at 7:00 PM. Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Nay.
Ordinance is on third consideration. Ordinance 6261, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.070 by rezoning Blocks 75 and 76, Railroad Edition, and vacated South 20th Street between 27th and 28th Avenues from C2 Commercial District to I2 General Industrial District as defined in Chapter 15.21.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance 6265, as revised, amending Chapter 9.36 entitled Parking Meters by amending current Section 9.36.020 Parking Meter Zones and Parking Lots Designated.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance 6266, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the Bluffs Vision Urban Renewal Area in the city of Council Plus, County of Potawatomi, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Council Plus, County of Potawatomi, Council Plus Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and in deadness, including bonds issued or to be issued, incurred by the city in connection with the Bluffs Vision Urban Renewal Area.
Motion to approve. Second.
Is there a discussion?
I pose a... that was a thought. We are postponing public hearing on the agreement until the 11th of April. By taking action on third consideration this time, we will have created a new TIF district in that area that is totally surrounded by an existing TIF district. We, inasmuch as we don't have the development, or we just received a draft of the development agreement, I should say, and still need time to study the details. And we have parties that are unhappy with the proposed development agreement. I'm wondering if perhaps it is prudent to also postpone this third consideration until the 11th of April, because once we do this, we will have conceivably made it a bit more difficult, certainly not impossible, to entertain other commercial development. But I'm just thinking that if we're not gonna be able to move forward on this agreement materially until at least 11th April, is it not prudent perhaps just to give this third reading some more time? I think that makes sense.
I think that makes sense. I thought, yeah, that's all connected. But can we just move... so we'll be on the 3rd, then, on the 11th?
I would make a motion to postpone third consideration until 11 April.
Second.
All right. The motion is to postpone till April 11th. Any further discussion?
Just that I think it's fine to postpone it. I think that regardless of whether or not this particular development goes in or not, we would want to have a separate tax district down there. But I wouldn't want that clock to start running until it needed to, because it's only gonna run for a certain period of time. And the one that's down there now is getting close to running out, and it makes it very hard to negotiate or get a developer involved. So I think it's fine to go ahead and hold up, if nothing more than to stop the clock until...
Any other discussion? Motion or vote on the motion to postpone till April 11th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 6269, establishing the Hawkeye Heights Phase 2 Urban Revitalization Area within the city of Council Plus.
Motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolutions, Resolution 16-46, authorizing the mayor to execute Iowa DOT Agreement Number 2016-TJ-002, transfer jurisdiction of West Broadway, US 6, and North 16th Street, Iowa 192.
Motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry.
Please.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 16-47, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Gray Core Incorporated for the Rivers Edge subdivision improvement project, Phase 3.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Nay.
Resolution 16-47, the city council of the city of Council Plus grants approval of tax abatement on improvements made to real property at 1700 through 1760 North 16th Street in the Bluffs Northway Urban Revitalization Area during the 2015 tax assessment year.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 16-49, the city council of the city of Council Plus grants approval of tax abatement on improvements made to real property at 605 South 15th Street in the Indian Creek South Urban Revitalization Area during the 2015 tax assessment year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Just to remind folks that these, this and the resolution prior were, again, pertaining to those urban revitalization areas that I was referencing before. Both of these revitalization areas were, or this area is pre-existing, and it gives the developer a chance to take advantage and develop a neglected piece of property in that revitalization zone. What the city has been doing to date has that we've been constructing these revitalization zones in small packages in order to help out individual projects. This, the previous one was a little bit larger area, and an individual decided to move into that area and take advantage of that revitalization zone in order to get a bit of a property tax break. Now, these property tax breaks, in essence, forgive the increased value for those improvements to the land for a period of time. This is something different than a TIF agreement, which involves rebates of tax, and that incurs a public debt until that's fully repaid. A little bit different of a proposition. Again, the fact that we have some businesses taking advantage of those small districts is very nice and encouraging, but again, possibly opening this up to larger sections of the city in well-defined areas such as the West Broadway Corridor poses some potential advantages to the community and to people who would want to invest in Council Plus. And I wish to re-engage the city staff again on this issue. It's been done in Des Moines and some other large cities across Iowa. In fact, Des Moines pretty much made all the city of Des Moines into a revitalization area, so it can be done. And I think that this is an idea whose time has come, especially for an area like the West Broadway Corridor, where we are looking to bring a real shot in the arm to that area.
I do have one here to look into that. I know Des Moines gave up property tax increases for 10 years. I don't think it's been all that successful in Des Moines. It really put the city in a financial crunch, I think. But we'll look into it and see what makes sense. On the TIF, for those who don't know, people will get rebated the taxes they pay, only the taxes they pay, and then we can set the percentage of the amount they... for those who don't know, people will get rebated the taxes they pay, only the taxes they pay, and then we can set the percentage of the amount they get back as opposed to just forgiving taxes, but I'm not an expert on it. Uh, don't profess to be, and I'll find out, and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution sixteen dash five two designating parking meter zones and establishing time limits for parking meter spaces within those zones as provided for in the newly amended Section nine point two six point zero two zero and newly created Section nine point two six point zero two one.
Motion to approve.
Is there a discussion?
Do we need a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I will s- second. I think the title, if I may ask the, the movement, I think the title newly created, uh, section was removed in the prior, so uh, could I ask, could I make a friendly amendment that it'd be the, the, uh, parking meter zones for the newly amended Section nine point two six point zero two zero and strike newly created Section nine point two six point zero two one?
Right, because it didn't newly.
We.
The ones that are currently on there, correct?
We, yeah, we took out, in the, the revision, we took, we shortened up the language considerably. So I didn't want the, I, I'm, I doubt there's any confusion amongst us, but I didn't want the record to be unclear.
Okay.
Uh, is, would you agree to that?
Absolutely.
Okay, then I would second.
How, how does the resolution read just out of curiosity I'm at?
Uh, the, the resolution itself?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good question. Let's take a look. Perhaps that's in there as well. The subject or title appears to mention it, however, the actual resolution.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure there was a conflict.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. No, I, well, the, the resolution in the title of the resolution mentions the newly created, however, the operative clauses don't. Dick, do you?
We should be fine with.
We should be fine the way it's, okay. Okay, I just wanted to make certain.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any additional discussion? A friendly amendment, uh, do we need to vote on that, or can we vote as amended?
I think that the resolution is there as, as, as set, so we're voting on it.
Alright. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellations, eight, A, B, and C inclusive.
Motion to approve eight, A, B, and C inclusive.
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk, any citizens requesting to be heard?
None received.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council? Can you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, let me get this, thirteen twelve Avenue B.
Thank you.
I have some information that I brought for the council that I would like for you guys to look over.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Um, I brought copies for each, and then I brought, I'm sorry, they're not stapled together. I didn't have time to pick up a stapler.
I'll second Melissa's motion to receive and file.
I brought a hard copy as well. It's through five there, or here. And here's a hard copy for the mayor as well. Um, there is a copy of the Omaha laws contoning, pertaining to snakes and, um, the non venomous snakes. I know this isn't Omaha, but if you look at them, they're really reasonable. Um, there's also a copy of the Iowa State Law pertaining to exotic snakes. And it's pretty interesting, I think. Um, and I would, I'm not sure how you guys look at that, but I found it pretty interesting that, I mean, we are in Iowa. And we think that that should have some, some bearing on this matter here. So. I would like to get your input.
So.
Saying you should not own the, right, the Iowa law?
What's a reticulated python?
Pythons, yes. They're speci- very specific. And ball pythons are nowhere in there.
What's the difference between, uh, reticulated python?
Reticulates get really big, really, really big, and they do have an aggression level. Whereas ball pythons do not get big, and they do not have that aggression level.
Wha- what's really, really big versus just big?
Really, really big, we're talking fifteen feet and up, whereas ball pythons are five feet down.
Wow, I'm looking at this here, and I'm kind of asking myself, okay, what's the difference between a European swallow and an African swallow?
Accent?
I mean, we're talking size-wise. It's all, you know, ball pythons are the smallest of the spe- the python species. And that's the difference.
But it would. I'm, I know you're more expert than I am, but it's a species of python, and ball python is not considered a reticulated?
No, absolutely not. Or an African rock python, like what's? That's a different species of python, too. It's all on their size.
So I would think they're, again, multiple.
They're not even sold around here.
That are reticulated pythons.
It's, they're in different categories. A reticulated is.
I, I did have the question from somebody if.
No, they do in Omaha. I know that PetSmart is wanting to. I have talked to them, and then I do know that they want to.
I've received a, n- not a large number, I can't say that, but I've received, um, about four, three or four emails on this subject, so not a whole lot, but frankly, um, on most issues, uh, I seldom get a lot of emails. I don't think, I, I think in general we don't, at least from my general understanding, a lot of times we, we generally don't get a lot of emails. I wish we got more. They were all against changing, the ones I received were, were against changing this. Um, again, my, my view ha- hasn't changed, but my respect for you following what you believe to be right remains the same as well. But since you asked, I, my, my view remains the same.
I'm still gathering the community signatures, which I am making progress with, so respectfully against the four, I have gained a lot more than that in the community.
Alright, and I, I look forward to, to seeing them and, and, and furthering the discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And ma'am, can you give your name and address for the record, please?
Dawn Blake, six twenty-two West Washington. And I'd like to ask a question, why are you still, um, dead set against it, so to speak? Um, as she said, and I myself used to have a ball python before I, I came to town, and now my brother has it in Papillion. Um, they get to five feet, that's it. Those, um, snakes are more scared of you than you are of them. And I've never heard of anyone being.
I was gonna say, you don't know me.
Like, I'm petrified of a five feet snake.
Well, but, um, I've never heard of anyone being killed by a ball python. A ball python cannot crush a person.
Well, I, I, you, you, you appear to be, uh, looking at me, ma'am, so I, I'm happy to, to answer. I, I think, again, a lot of our public safety laws come down to a, a really tricky balancing act of the rights of the individual, which I'd agree we should uphold uh, very highly. But then again, there's also the rights of, of a society, of, of, of the people in an urban area where many of our houses are, you know, within ten, twenty, thirty feet of the house next door. And so we have to consider, um, it's, it's like the old expression that the, the right to move your fist ends before the tip of my nose. It's, it's how do we balance the rights of one person and the rights of others, too? And it's, it's not, it's not easy. Uh, the vast majority of our laws really boil down to this. How do you, how does the rights of one person versus the rights of society a- at large? And when it comes to snakes, you are right, the laws of the two states are very different. Um, they're different in a lot of things. And one of the great things about our country is each state has great sovereign power to decide things differently uh, than, uh, than the other states. Uh, so what may, what the people of Nebraska may decide to allow in all vast swaths of life or decide, most things are still decided at state levels. Big things are decided in Washington, but a lot of things that affect you in your everyday life, far more of the local laws and state laws affect you if, 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 if folks stop and think about it. And the, and so each state has defined them differently, and Nebraska and Iowa on, on this sort of thing have chosen to go different ways. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm just not convinced when, when we talk about five foot long snakes that to, to me and to people, uh, residents who contact me and ones I've reached out and talked to, they see a difference between a house cat and, and a five foot snake in an urban area. And, and I, and I have to, and I have to say I, I agree with them. Um, and, and it's just not well-suited for being in town. It goes back to last time, a lot of people apparently got a kick out of my example. Uh, I'm not the biggest lover of horses, but I kind of like them. And, but my postage stamp-sized yard in town, uh, like most people's yard, just wouldn't be big enough, even if I wanted one, so I have to go out to family who live in the country on the, a lot of family that farm, and so they, they can have them, and they've got room. I, I have to choose. I, I can't have both. And snakes to me are kind of like, is, make as about as much sense a five foot snake in town as me having a pony in my front yard or a full horse or something, and you're getting a kick out of this, but, uh.
May I ask where that, uh, where that ordinance is on the, the website? Because I could not find anything except for, every time I tried to Google something about it, it just kept coming up about pit bulls.
If, if you go to the, I, I cannot sight off the top of my head, but if you go to the public, uh, safety, uh, it's in one of the chapters on public safety. Uh, I'm sure we could pull it up for you. If you ask me afterwards, I'll, I, I or the city attorney can point it out to you, I'm sure. I'd be glad to do that.
But it speaks to indigenous, snakes indigenous to the state of Iowa.
It does.
What do you mean by indigenous?
From here.
Naturally found.
They would have been here before we were, basically. And would survive our winters and so forth.
Well, ball pythons have survived winters.
Well, I don't think they're indigenous, though. I'm, I'm no great expert in snakes, but I don't think they're indigenous to the, the Midwest region.
Well, of course, one of the reasons given was that they, that they weren't at risk is they couldn't survive the winters because people have seen what happens in Florida and, and what happens to the wildlife when a, a species that's not germane or common to that area gets loose and starts breeding in the wild, but but we've been assured that a ball python can't do that because of the cold weather.
Let's hope not, anyway.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the council?
My name is Travis Johnson, thirteen twelve Avenue B. Um, Mr. Watson, would you like me to email you? It, it's a joke.
Okay. Well, you're, you're welcome to email me. I don't know the punchline, but, uh, if you have additional information, I know you've spoken before, sir, uh, and I, I don't think I'm the only one against, uh, re, uh, uh, changing our snake definition, though it seems this evening I'm the one that's most verbose about it.
I would, I was just playing around with it.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I will come back with that, trust me. Um, although, you know, just out of curiosity, I actually have you all in front of me. And, and, um, one of the other things that you guys had discussed this evening was the, uh, the North Sixteenth and West Broadway, um, taking over. Now, from what my understanding of that was, was the whole point was that you wanted to be able to respond quicker to maintenance issues, is that correct?
Needs to be rebuilt.
Well, it's, it's, that's part of it, but it's bigger, i- isn't it, Mr. Mayor? It's about whether we get it, get any money for it now, or get it like one ninety-one used to be, and don't get any money and have to fix it with local money. Is that?
Yeah, and, and, uh, it, it's both those issues. You know, the state has offered us enough money to rebuild it new. Um, if we take over the responsibility, if we don't, they will continue to patch it. Um, from an economic development standpoint, uh, we think it makes sense to beautify the west end of the city, um, so that it will become attractive to businesses to locate on West Broadway.
Okay, well, that, that was where I was kind of a little confused. I was thinking, well, you know, what's the point of us taking that over when it's plainly obvious to anybody that drives either one of those streets that is in desperate need of a lot of money? You know, so it just kind of seemed like a little bit, you know, a lot, a chunk to chew.
Keep in mind, there's no storm sewer on Broadway, so that's one of the problems. If you're driving Broadway in a storm, you know, the water just splashed.
I'm not driving Broadway in a storm.
Yeah, it, it's just, the water gets deep, it has nowhere to go, it's hard to get people to want to build on West Broadway or redevelop because the road is in such poor condition and the utilities are old. It's not something the state's willing to do without us taking it over, and we can't do it ourselves, so.
You know, and, and when it, when it, it comes down to it, um, i- i- it desperately needs fixed, and, you know, it's, and I appreciate, I, I've heard some arguments, and I, and, and I understand where people are coming from, where they're saying, well, what's the difference? It's still my tax money, it's coming from the state, it's coming from the city. Well, there is, there is a difference, e- even though all of us pay a lot in state tax, sure we do. The difference is, is we can have that twenty million come to our city to get our money back that you're paying in state money and get it back for our road, or Cedar Rapids, or pick another city, I don't mean to pick on them, but pick another city, they'll get it, so it's not like we won't have to pay our, our income tax. Uh, and then we'll, you'll get stuck paying for the whole road out of property tax.
Sure.
Which will definitely, which particularly hits folks who are at the age of their lives where they're no longer making an income and are on a fixed income, especially our older folks, and they can't afford to pick that up. And so, so when they, when they dangle money in front of us and say, gosh, would you take this? Uh, it was just a few years ago, maybe, maybe ten, fifteen or so roughly, that the state said the same thing to us as a county with what used to be called one ninety-one, and isn't called that until you hit the Harrison County line now, just south of Tri-Center there by six eighty, because the state dangled money and said we'd, they would rebuild it if the county, if we as a county took it. And at the time, I, I understand, it looked like a major liability taking it going forward, didn't ta- and decided not to take it. I, I understand that. But eventually the state said, here you go, and since the state's in charge of counties and cities, they can give it to you with, uh, give it to you, uh, and you have to take care of it, and that's what they did with that road, and so all of us were stuck paying for that road entirely out of local money, and your state money went elsewhere. And I'm not faulting the people at the time, because it's always hard to foresee these things. I just want to learn from it.
Well, I mean, in theory, what would stop that from happening to us anyways, you know? I mean, I see what you're saying, they're going to give us the money if that's what we choose to do, but, I mean, in the future down the road, what happens when we need to rebuild it again? It will have to happen eventually.
That, that's a very good point, and the thing is, is once it's ours, it's ours, but bear in mind, the, a great deal of the road money, particularly on, that's still a US highway, Highway six, a great deal of your money comes from, comes from your federal taxation. A lot of the federal projects we do are generally about an eighty percent at least match of federal money, and I appreciate, again, that's money that's coming out of your left pocket instead of your right. But, but it's going to that street there instead of somewhere else. And our, our goal as a local government is to get as much of your money back from all the sources as we possibly can. It's a zero-sum game. We, you, you're forced, you're stuck paying it, we're trying to get as much back as we can. And it's a fight, and it's a fight, quite frankly, we've been winning. And I think we can keep doing it, because we've shown a great need, as you say, our roads are, 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 could be in a lot better shape. And, uh, they're very well-traveled, and we're, we're a growing city, right in the largest metro area of the state. Um, and I, I think that's a fantastic opportunity, and so you raise really good points, and I, I think the, I think the city, and, and I think the mayor's been very wise to have negotiated a, a very good. And I think the city and I think the mayor's been very wise to have negotiated a very good deal to get as much money as we can to fix it, to at least fix it completely now for the first time since 1950. It'll be completely rebuilt after storm sewers.
And I spoke earlier about looking into the future on capital improvements and budgeting for those sorts of things. When you look at redoing roads, one of the most expensive things, the components of those road projects is not so much the surface of the road, it's what lies beneath those roads. The sewers, if you will, a very expensive component. And by taking this project on, this provides an opportunity to not only do the stormwater drainage, sewers in that area, it also provides an opportunity to replace and update sanitary sewers. And also, our waterworks will be taking advantage of that opportunity to update water lines. So as we look to redevelop that West Broadway corridor, this will kind of provide a good shot in the arm to provide some up-to-date infrastructure for this area of town moving well into the future. So I think all around that this makes a lot of sense, and I commend the city for the way that it's projected, how it wants to do this work in phased development so that nobody's inconvenienced more than absolutely necessary. And I think that they've outlined a good plan of attack, and so I think this will work out.
Well, and one of the few things the city can do to incent economic development, improvements in neighborhoods and those types of things is with infrastructure. We were on Saturday, driving, I think we were on Avenue C, which is close to where my wife grew up, and she said, yeah, the old neighborhood really looks great. Their people are investing in their homes. And I said, yeah, we put a new street in here four or five years ago. And so a new street helps create excitement, helps people take pride in their property, and it makes sense for them to reinvest in their property, knowing they'll get a return on their investment. And we hope the same thing happens on West Broadway.
And I would say, too, if I recall, we were told by the water company that some of the water lines down there are almost 100 years old.
Older.
And older, so big problems that need to be taken care of. I mean, that is beyond what we would consider its effective life.
They do leak a little bit, as you might imagine, that the efficiency's not the best that they used to be. So that's costing you money.
Oh, my water pressure's okay. And thankfully, by the time that this has to come up again, I will probably be dead, so. All right, so on to the advertise I'm sure everybody was expecting me to want to talk to you about. Now, I do bring up the question, obviously, of snakes. And what specifically that I want you to kind of take into mind, and you had talked about it a little bit earlier, is, you know, we choose to govern our own way, which is entirely different than mostly aghous over on the other side of the river, which is cool with me because I kind of like it over here as compared to over there, you know? However, it brings up the thought to mind, you know, I've thought for a long time personally, and for some reason, a lot of local people don't seem to think this way. But a lot of people who are not from this area kind of see this town, as my dad put it, as a sleeping giant, you know? We really could go a long ways in a short amount of time if we really put our heads together about it. And, you know, I see a lot of the things that you guys have been planning. I read a lot of the, what is it, the CB, like, 2030 or something like that plan. And a lot of that is reflective of very forward-thinking in trying to, you know, get us to step out of the shadow of Omaha, you know, and be our own city. But the point that I want to make is, yes, we are thinking in our own direction and going our own way, which is something that is new, at least in my experience and lifetime, and I applaud that. And I'm very excited about where we could be going. However, I like to think that if we want to attract more people to want to move to our city, we do have to consider things like our little not-so-furry friends. And is outside of the box, I'm sure, as you people may think, I don't mean to say you people, like in a derogatory term, about that. The way I see it is the difference between having a pony in your yard and having a snake in your house is, well, you know, we can fit a snake in our house, you know? You know, as for worrying about kind of public safety issues, I mean, there are an example exactly zero miles across the river that it can be done in a safe manner. And if we want to be able to attract a new kind of population to want to resettle here and grow the city, we have to kind of think outside the box and what they may want to bring with them. And I do know that there are people that have come to the city and had to rehome their reptiles. And, I mean, they're becoming more and more popular across the United States. It is the kind of pet that people are starting to realize, actually, it's kind of cool to have. And it's those kinds of people usually typically a little bit more free-thinking, exactly the kind of people we probably would want here if we're going to try to get the city to move in a different direction. So I would just like you to kind of keep that into consideration.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, I think when we look at being forward-thinking and what the next generation, the millennials, are looking at, I would say that I'm not necessarily sure you're right on that. And the reason I would say that is, is that we're getting more and more pushback from people to outlaw taking species from their natural habitats. If you've been watching what's been happening with SeaWorld, now it's expanding to other things. There's a new push by the younger generation to stop allowing animals to be taken from their native countries and brought into our country where they're not native. And I'm not really sure that this is something that we're going to find is a new trend that is building. I would say, if anything, we're going to see it pulling back. I had mentioned before that I did do research, I have been reading. I want to understand what ball pythons are and what the situation is. And I would tell you that I still believe from what I'm reading, we'll see at some point where the federal government is going to keep them from being brought into our country. So I don't think that this is getting on the front end of something by changing our ordinance. I think we might already be where a lot of other communities will be going with these type of pets, much like, you know, at one time, when I was a kid, I had a pet skunk. It was, you know, veterinarian, the mama had been killed by a car, asked us to take this skunk in.
And you left it my pony.
We can't do that now. They're not legal in the city limits. I think probably at one time, you saw people with, you know, monkeys and different things in the city limits. But as time goes on, these ordinances are put in place because that's what the public wants. And I've got to tell, I haven't been on council that long, this will be my fifth year, but this is the first time I've ever been approached or asked about changing this ordinance. So I'm not sure that the broader community is interested in that as much as maybe a smaller segment of the community. But again, I do appreciate all the information you're bringing us, and I respect that this is a pet that you have and you would like to continue to have. But so far, I haven't read anything that would change where I've been on this issue.
I do want to point out, I think the health code is Chapter 4, and animals are found at 4.20. And then there'll be another period in three digits thereafter, depending on what part of the animal. Humane Animal Treatment and Control section you're looking at, again, 4.20. And it starts at .010 and then goes .020 and so forth. But that's where you find it. You can, if you go online, Google it.
That's, you're talking city-wise.
Yeah, the city code, to answer your question, ma'am.
There was a question earlier from another...
I wanted to answer that before we left so that you knew. It's in 4.20 is the current language, so you can see that the law that, as I understand it, you might want to change, would be found there. As well as the history, if you click on any of the individual sections, you'll see when...there'll be different dates there. Something, the date it was passed, and if it's been ever been amended or changed in any way, it usually has that year's date as well. So sometimes you can track to see how people have changed things over time, if they have. And it helps you to better understand. Sometimes it's hard to really see where we're at today in a particular law, or it doesn't make sense if you first look at it. Sometimes you work backwards, you can see how we got to something. And this might be an example of something I'd encourage you to look at, to see how we got to laws like this in the early 20th century.
So just about the same number is the state code, actually. I believe it was actually 4.20 something, rather, is where we found that. We still have yet to see the actual city code.
Well, this would be the city code. The state code will have numbers that'll be three digits long, usually. It'll be like 123-point-something or... Is it 7 hundreds for animals? Okay. Oh, thank you, 7 hundreds. I'm not familiar with that part of the state law terribly.
Okay, thanks. We've got a five-minute limit, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. I was going to make two counterpoints.
We've been talking more than you have, so... It's been pretty close to 15, but we've taken at least 10 of that, so...
Well, everybody's been having a good time.
Thank you.
It's a good discussion, thank you.
You're up, Bruce.
Yes. It's required.
You weren't here at the last meeting, I don't think. Okay, then you have to.
The bike trail?
Cloudy weather and stuff like that, steep driveway. Chris Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue. You know about the bike trail. I've been asking about it for a long time, and I keep bringing it up. But I got to say, our snow removal, I got to say, we've got one of the top ones around. I don't care what anyone says, I don't know how many calls you get.
A lot.
And so far, from since I've been coming here, I have disagreed with you, I've agreed with you, I've argued with you. And so far, I think that we kind of go as still friendly and stuff like that. Hope that you guys understand that.
Thank you. Yeah, we do get a lot, I get a lot of phone calls every time it snows. But it's testament to what you say, the majority of those are complimentary, and people typically don't call in if they have something good to say. But, you know, it runs a gamut of you're too slow to, you're too fast. And people say, well, how can you be too fast? Well, I scooped my driveway and the snowplow came by, and so I cleaned it up, and they came by again. And I get those same phone calls from the same neighborhood. I got one from an area where we know all the neighbors pushed their snow into the middle of the street from their homes and then called and said the snow removal people haven't been here when all our trucks have GPS and we know exactly when and where they are all the time during the day. And so we can go back and say, no, they went through your neighborhood at X time. But again, all the neighbors think that it makes sense for them to push their snow into the middle of the street and then have the city come back and redo it, so... But they do a great job. They are national award winners. Two years ago, they were recognized as one of the top 10 in the country, so...
I know a lot of us do a fair amount of driving all over for work, and I do for commute. And I get to see different, talk about different jurisdictions, get to see different cities and different states do it. And there are some places not very far away that don't even plow if it snows under three inches. They certainly aren't putting down the beet brine solution that... Talking about the ingenuity of city workers that invented this product, this process, to save you quite a bit of money inventing it. Just the phenomenal streets and I get, I'm not a morning person, but I get up earlier than I'd like. And when I do, it's already plowed at least once. Sometimes I swear they've gone through twice, and I'm not on a snow route. And as I go through town, it's getting to the residential areas much, much faster. So I know it could always, we'd always hope it'd be faster, and sometimes, you know, it's always easy for us included to say, oh, why isn't it faster? But we just don't know how good we have it, if you haven't been elsewhere. And they're up around the clock doing it, and they can't be thanked enough.
Anyone else? Anyone from the council? Word, Jer. Thank you. Have a great week and a safe week.
The Mid-America Center is the Heartland's premier entertainment and convention center. February 26 through the 28th, there's a million ideas to take home at the 14th Annual Council Bluffs Home and Landscaping Show. The same weekend, elite athletes hit the mat at the 2016 NJCAA National Wrestling Championships. And over at the convention center, March 12th and 13th, the Callahan Craft Fair makes its return. Remember, the MAC offers free parking for all events, tickets, information, and more at midamericacenter.com.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get personalized customer service like nowhere else, like our travel club.
Come see us, bank with us, and travel with us. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.